I will call to order this regular meeting of the Board of Education. It is Monday, June 22nd, 2020. It is 6:02 PM. The records show that all Board members are present except for Mr. Glenn. If you will, please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, Board, we have an agenda before us. Do I hear a motion to approve the agenda?
So do you.
Second.
Mr. Ritter, Ms. Ware, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The agenda is approved. Next up, we have information proposals, comments from the audience. Did we have any requests? Nope. Hearing none, we will move into our informational reports. First up, we have Board President's Report. And I just have a few things that I wanted to say. First off, I just wanted to thank the Board for their confidence in me to lead the Board this year as President. I appreciate your votes, and I'll do my best to fill the shoes of Mr. Glenn. Jeff's not here tonight, but I just wanted to thank him for his leadership with the Board over the past year. These have definitely been interesting times the last few months, and he's done a very good job of leading the Board and helping with Dr. Glass and leading our district. So we'll see what this year brings. Next, I'd like to congratulate all the graduates of the class of 2020. We wish you all well in their future endeavors. Hopefully, this next semester will be a little less interesting than the previous semester for them. I'd also like to thank all of our staff and administration that put on a successful graduation ceremony two Saturdays ago. Appreciate all the hard work that went into that. And I think the graduates and the families really appreciated the efforts to give them somewhat of a normal graduation ceremony. I'd also like to congratulate Dr. Miss Feigley and Mr. Casey Cook on their election to the Board. Kind of a unique election process from one being moved from an April to a June voting opportunity. But then on top of that, for the third position, first time that I can ever remember, we had a tie that had to go back to hand-counted ballots. And Missy won by five votes. So that's the closest election that I've heard of in our district. But anyway, congratulations on that. Kind of brings back a point that every vote definitely counts, especially in local elections. So people that say, you know, "I don't need to vote because, you know, there's so many other people that are going to vote." When it comes right down to it, your vote does count. And then because Missy and Casey were elected to the Board and Jared was re-elected, we lost one of our incumbent Board members. So I'd like to thank Tony Smee for his 12 years of service on the Board. His experience and insights were invaluable to the Board over his past 12 years, and he'll definitely be missed. But we're looking forward to seeing what this Board can do. So I'm also looking forward to a successful upcoming school year. While there's still many things that are unknown and uncertain because of the COVID-19 pandemic, we do have many things that are known. For instance, we've got several bond issues that are probably going to be completed and many others that will be started, including the Alma Schroeder Expansion Project, Jefferson Elementary remodel and the Aquatic Center, and then the central pool renovation will probably begin, plus some other smaller projects that are needed. But we're also going to have our first fifth-grade class come through Jefferson Elementary. So I'm looking forward to that, see how that works. And the year after that, or year after this coming year, we'll have our sixth-grade program stay at Jefferson. So we'll have pre-K through sixth grade at Jefferson. So that's going to be an interesting transition for us. And lastly, I would like to wish a happy birthday to one of our own, Mr. Matt Welker. He has a big birthday today. He turned...
Forty.
There you go. So happy birthday.
Thank you.
And that's all I have for this one. Next up, we have our Superintendent's Report. And Dr. Glass.
Thank you, sir. I too want to echo how proud I was of the high school team. Miss Scheller put on a fantastic graduation, given the circumstances. It was a fun event. It was a great experience for us. A lot of families got very creative with their vehicles. We saw school buses, we saw trailers, we saw them all decorated up. We saw smoke bombs, chupetti bombs. It was very entertaining. And so I appreciate that and all their efforts. We're currently working on re-entry plans for the fall. It's a massive undertaking, to say the least. As you know, we currently have surveys out to our families and our staff to help finalize that plan. We want their input, what are they looking for, what are they concerned with, and what worked this spring, what didn't work. So things of that nature, so we can help strengthen our plan. Our focus is on a safe, healthy learning environment that will allow all of us to address unique needs of our kids coming into the school year. Much like this spring, we realize this fall will bring its own set of challenges. As students miss valuable class time this spring, we will have to work on catching them up. And as a matter of fact, summer school is kind of geared towards that. You know, K through eight, we're looking at making up fourth-quarter work that has been missed. But we're usually geared towards enrichment during that time, but given the circumstances, we're leaning towards the fourth-grade material that those students were short of. So please know we're considering all aspects when we're planning. We take this very seriously. Lastly, I want to congratulate this Board on receiving the MSBA 2020 Governance Team Award. We want to keep our streak alive. We're doing some good work, and I appreciate all your guidance on that. So thank you.
Thank you. Any questions on Dr. Glass's report? Nope. We will move on to our Program Evaluations. Nutrition Services, Josh Crowe and Dana McLeod.
First off, before we get into this, I do want to recognize Dana McLeod. She does not want to speak. However, she has been the hero of Cape Public Schools since early March with dismissal and a food program and organizing that and spearheading and just the monumental work that she put in to keep our community fed and organizing multiple different agencies all together. She has just done a fantastic job, and we're very proud of her. So moving on to the Program Evaluation, you can see before you. If you have any questions regarding, as you look over that, we'll be happy to address it. Or I could read it word-for-word to you. One of the main things that you'll see with the improvement of our food program is when Dana came in as our Food Nutrition Director, or District Nutrition Director, we transitioned to CEP. And we'll talk about that a little bit later with our Support Services Report. But a lot of the benefits that you see, how our food service program has grown and operated, is directly correlated to moving as a CEP district. And again, for a reminder, that means all of our students are allowed a free breakfast and a free lunch every day. And then on top of that, the Seamless Summer Program that we use for summer school feedings as well, too, where anybody 18 and under is allowed to eat. And that's not just, they don't have to be enrolled in summer school. They can be, it's be anybody in the community, 18 years and younger. Now, there's a lot of waivers that are out there now recently because of COVID. But again, through Dana's leadership, we've really been able to reach far into the community in helping our families.
Well, I'd like to note, too, that even all of our families, because we were CEP, got the benefit of that.
Actually, $300 that came out through the CARES Act, yes. The only requirement there was you had to fill out the form through USDA or through DESI in order to get that, basically, stipend card for the summer.
Is that program still available?
Yes.
Okay.
Kristen Towne has pushed that message out far and wide through all of our various different ways that we communicate with our district patrons.
Anyone have any questions, comments? Thank you for your hard work in making sure our children still get to eat during these unique times. So appreciate that. Next up, we have our Treasurer and Finance Report. You're not, you're waiting for the vote? Okay.
A big report.
A big report. So we'll move on to Support Services Report.
Welcome back. So in front of you, you have a spreadsheet that Dana prepares for us each month. It's a three-year, now it's into its third year comparison. It just allows you to look at what our expenditures and revenues are within operating in CEP and what our total reimbursement rate is. So you can go through there and compare. One of the things that you obviously will see different and what fluctuates the most is student attendance. And that will determine the numbers. But as you go through, you see where we were at in March, April, and May this year compared to where we were last year. So some of those numbers are obviously down. But other than that, if you look at it overall, it has been an upward trend, which basically means more kids are eating, more families are fed. Also with Support Services, just so that you're aware, to touch back in, asphalt work has begun in the district. Blanchard Elementary is done. That contract was awarded to Asa Asphalt. We received a couple of bids, but with Asa's bid, it fell within the realm of what the Board authorized us to do last month. And it was, came in roughly around $198,000, where we were authorized up to $200,000. The next closest bid was about $56,000 more than what they were. So we felt like we went with a good product. We checked out their references. They've done a lot of work with other districts as well. We also do city contracts, state contracts, things of that nature. Local company, they stand behind the work. So you'll see their equipment out on our lots again. Blanchard's already done, they started work at CTC and CHS as well. They got a little bit more paving done today. Hopefully, they'll be done with CTC by the end of this week and then move on to the high school next week. Then that project will be done. Alma Schroeder's moving along, still on schedule. We're looking at that project to be done by the end of July, first part of August. Kitchen equipment will start being installed here in the next, within the next two weeks with the main cooler freezer unit. Tile work is already being done. Painting is taking place, sheet rock is up. Next week, tech will go in and we'll start laying all the cable for the technology infrastructure with CAD wiring and Ethernet wiring and Internet access ports, so on and so forth. So Schroeder, again, is just moving along great. It's kind of one of those things where on the outside, it doesn't look like it's progressing. But if you're to be in the building on the inside, there's a lot of progress that's taking place. And we're really happy with that. Other projects that are occurring, our maintenance department's doing a great job. We've got the new chiller set at the high school that you agreed on that purchase a couple of months ago. That's being tied into the new high school. The new unit's being tied into the high school now and should be operational in the next week or two as well. So those are our big projects that are out there and taking place right now. Any questions, concerns, or comments? Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, we have Board Reports. First up is MSBA Delegate Report. Anything to report this month?
Well, there was an online meeting that Casey and Jared attended. So I'm going to pass it to them.
Okay.
Mine will kind of go over to the Legislative Report. But did attend that Igniting Great Ideas Summit on Friday. So it was telepresence kind of summit for the Missouri State Board Association. It was really good. I mean, it was, you know, online, interactive kind of thing. There's a lot of good sessions. Sent you guys out a lot of the legislative summaries. You guys have those in your emails. Kind of perused them, it was the first time I've really looked super close at them. But a lot of good stuff coming up. Also, have made contact with all of our local and United States Senators, Representatives, just trying to reach out to start, you know, making those networking connections so I can stay in touch with them from the legislative side. So on the delegate side, I just sat quietly and listened to the votes. I texted Jared, said, "Who are you going to vote for?" And no idea who these people are. That's all I have.
Jared, do you have anything?
No.
All right. Appreciate you sitting in on that and look forward to future reports. And next up, we have Cape Public Schools Foundation. This is Amy McDonald.
I don't want to take too much of your time. I want to give you some updates. We had our first food mobile, and Dana McLeod, who we talked about tonight, helped me greatly with my first food mobile. We organized a food mobile on June 11th. And, do I need that? We organized our first food mobile on June 11th at Franklin Elementary. I spent $4,079.81 out of our grant and some donated money. And we gave milk away, a dozen eggs, hot dogs. It was a, we packed them with, what, three or four bags of groceries? So this next food mobile will be this Thursday at Jefferson Elementary, and I'm planning on spending about the same amount. So we're giving away fresh celery this time. Last time, we did carrots, we did apples and oranges. So we are doing fresh fruits and vegetables as well as canned and other things that they can cook at home. So super excited about that. I wrote a grant to the Community Foundation of the Ozarks just recently. Again, it was through the Cooper Foundation, who also did COVID-19, that part of our $10,000 from them for food. This grant I wrote for Essential Learning, and I received $5,000. So we are going to be able to send home some parent learning guides to our students. Those guides run $8 apiece. So we will have to work on getting our budget down because we probably need $18,000. And I think I have $10,000. So my July 1st fundraiser, Community Strong, hashtag Cape Tigers, Community Strong, I have raised $5,000 to date. I have 25 businesses that are going to be setting up floats or doing some sort of something. I told them I really didn't even care if they set up a float, just as long as they had the sign out and they did a special inside their store, whatever they wanted to do. So I have several $500 sponsors, and I'd like to kind of go over those because I want to give them kudos. First State Community Bank, Hudson Chiropractic, Minglewood, EBOMD, La Croix Church, Roop and Root Family Dentistry, and then Montgomery Bank. I am waiting to hear back on several others. So I have several that are $100 option. And so I just wanted to let you all know that on July 1, I want you to shop, support local. So we need to dine at some of those restaurants that are going to be participating, and I'll get those maps to you. So that's all I have tonight. Thank you.
Any questions? Nope. Jared, do you have?
I was just making sure, we kind of skipped over the legislation. If Casey didn't have anything extra.
Yeah, no. I'd say I've shouted out to you guys.
Okay.
Perfect.
All right. So next up, we have Approval of Consent Agenda Items. We have minutes of previous meetings, May 18th, 2020. There's two sets. And June 11th, 2020, Payment of Bills, Perspectus for Math Life Skills, Bakery and Bread Products Bid, Dairy Products Bid, Food and Kitchen Supplies Bid, and Facilities Use Agreement with Boys and Girls Club. And all of that information was sent out in our Board Packet. Everyone had a chance to look at it. Is there any questions regarding any of those items? Hearing none, I need a motion to approve Consent Agenda Items.
Say it.
Glenn and Jared, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Consent Agenda Items are approved. Next up, we have our Business Items. First up, we have... So the first motion is to amend the 2019-2020 Budget to reflect actual expenditures, revenues, and fund transfers through June 30th, 2020. Do I hear a motion?
So do you.
Second.
Jared and Matt? Discussion? Dr. Welker?
What?
Welker. Wow. Glass?
You just said Matt. I'll excuse you this time. Beard for Jim. Thank you. Before I turn it over to our CFO, I just wanted to let everybody know how proud I am and how honored I am to work with the staff as diligent and as professional as they are because they really put a lot of time and effort into what they do in making sure that everything is right and dotting every i, crossing every t. And I'm very, very proud of them for doing that. The oversight of this budget is huge, and it takes a part on everybody to make sure that that is handled correctly. So from my cabinet to our building administrators to everybody else that has a part to play in it, thank you very much for handling the business the way you do. So with that said, I'm going to turn it over to Lindsay to let her kind of go over the highlights of this year's budget and how we're closing out.
Okay, so first up, we're going to go over the Estimated Budget Amendment Summary. We still call it estimated because there are still expenses that have not posted, and the numbers you have in front of you are projected. For 1920, we are estimating that we are going to end with a fund balance percentage of 26.27, which is a very healthy fund balance for us. Part of what is driving this fund balance is we have received CARES Act money in the form of ESAR funds. We received 75% of our allocation in 1920. And for our expenditures, we have unspent budget that is making our expenditures go down, which is contributing to the balance left. As of right now, we always plan on unspent budget, but this year, it's quite a bit higher due to COVID-19 and closing school three months early. We are asking for an approved transfer of a little over $1 million to the Capital Projects Fund, leaving that as a balance of $2.1 million. We would like to keep that balance there just as a safety net for any kind of building maintenance expenses or any kind of equipment expenses, HVAC, that we may have. Does anybody have any questions?
And for those watching at home, we had a work session earlier where we went over the budget, the new amendments for last year's, current fiscal year's budget and then coming year's budgets. So anyone have any questions or comments? I'd just like to say again, thank you to Dr. Glass and his administration on the hard work that they put into making sure that our district is very fiscally responsible with the tax dollars and other revenues that we get. We don't have to do our tax anticipation note and don't foresee having to do that with a 26.27% fund balance. That should be more than enough to keep from having to do all that. And since there's so many uncertainties coming up with state revenues and whether or not the governor's going to make budget cuts to public school funds available, we don't know what's going to happen. So we're in a very good place that we don't have to worry too much about it. But just want to commend everybody for the hard work that goes into this. I know it's not unstressful. All right, if there's no other comments or questions, the motion on the floor right now is to amend the 2019-2020 Budget to reflect actual expenditures, revenues, and fund transfers through June 30th, 2020. So if there's no other comments, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Amendment approved. Is there a question there? Okay. We did. All right. Next up, we have Approval of 2020-2021 Proposed Budget. So I need a motion to adopt the 2020-21 Budget as presented earlier. Ms. Jared? Discussion? Ms. Lindsay?
So for our 2021 Budget, there are four parts to a budget that are required by DESI. The number one requirement is the Budget Message, and you will find that under the Budget section. And the Budget Message just kind of highlights some key components of our revenues and expenses for this year. So I'm just going to briefly touch on them. Our main revenue source for the district is our property taxes. And every year, the district, the property that falls within the district's boundaries is assessed, and that's when we receive our assessed valuation. This year is a non-reassessment year for us, but we are projecting a conservative 3/4 of a percentage increase in assessed valuation. So that gives us a little bit of extra revenue to come in. The second largest component of our revenue is basic state aid, which is our basic formula money. This area of our revenue is the area where we really don't have a lot of answers. We're given best and worst-case scenarios. We were very conservative in our projections for state aid. We anticipate that there will be cuts to the state aid announced in July, but we don't know what they are right now. Our state sales tax revenue is also a major component of our revenue. It's Prop C money. And with that, we were conservative in the budget currently. They pay us Prop C money based on prior year weighted ADA. And they have given us estimates that they feel like they could reach 1,049. We've been more conservative with our number, and we're only budgeting for 975 for weighted ADA. For our expenditures, when you look at our budget, really, the students, when we start, they're at the heart of everything that we do. That's where the expenditures start. And so in order to support our students the best way we can, we feel like we have to have competitive salary and benefits packages. So our expenditures include a 2% increase for salaries. And our healthcare premiums are going to remain flat at $500 per employee. Our budget assumes that our purchased services will remain flat compared to the prior year, and our general supplies budget is going to increase a little bit. And it's mainly in instructional supplies, which would be Chromebooks and iPads for our students. Our capital projects is increasing a little bit. We have some E-rate, an E-rate project that is in there as well as we have a couple of vehicles in our budget. The second part of our budget that is required is the General Budget Summary, and that's where you will see all of the revenues and expenditures lined out. And with everything that we have right now, we're anticipating a ending fund balance of $23.3. This is where our healthy reserves for 1920 really come into play because they help us offset any revenue shortfalls that we may have for 2021. You have revenues where they have three-year comparison. You get our budget projected for 2021 compared to actuals for the prior two years. And the final component of this is our debt service schedule. So if you flip to the very back, this is where we will make our principal and interest payments by bonds that we have outstanding right now. So we are going to be making approximately $2.8 in principal payments and approximately $2.2 in interest payments in 2021 for a total of $5.1 million. And this budget is just, it's a team effort. It requires a lot of effort on a lot of people. And I certainly want to thank all the building administrators, all their administrative assistants, Cabinet, Dr. Glass. Their oversight is essential to making this work and for it to all come together. This budget, I know for a fact, is going to be fluid all year long. It's going to move up, it's going to move down. And we'll do our best to monitor it and to keep the Board, to keep you informed of the revenues as we become informed of them, of what's going on. But we do feel good about where we're starting, and we feel like we'll be able to end still in a good position.
Anyone have any questions, comments? Again, thank you for all the hard work. Looking forward to seeing where the census next year. All right, the motion on the floor is to adopt the 2020-2021 Budget as presented. If there's no further discussion, comments, or questions, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Budget is adopted.
Thank you, Board.
And next up, we have information proposals from any Board members. Anyone have anything? One thing I did fail to mention in my Board President's Report is that at our last meeting, we had our organization report where I assumed Chair of we had our Organization Report where I assumed the Chair of President, but also want to thank Mr. Welker for accepting the nomination of Vice President.
My pleasure.
And then we also have Dr. Missy Fegley, who, she agreed to be our MSBA Delegate, and Mr. Jared Ritter, who is going to be our second, and then Mr. Casey Cook, he stepped up and said he would do our Legislative Reports, so appreciate you guys doing that, and then thank you, Beth, for being our Secretary again, and Ms. Doody for being our Treasurer. We appreciate the, the work that goes behind the scenes. I know you guys have normal day jobs, but we appreciate you guys spending the extra time to, to help the Board do their, their work as well, so. If there's nothing else for the good of the Board, I will entertain any motion to adjourn.
Second.
Ms. Wade, Ms. Ritter, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
All right.
Any opposed? All right, we are adjourned.